Let's bring this meeting of the county commissioners to order. I'll wait for Ron to sit down before I call on him. It settles in. We do have Brandon Sanders is on his way over with the sign, "The bats will survive." So we'll get that taken care of today for the G Street Bridge. Okay. What else have you got for us, Ron?
I need you to, just by simple motion, reaffirm the findings that you made in September on the property we're going to sell to anybody, no one because I missed the timeline of getting that advertised. That was my bad. The statute says you have 10 days from the dead time you do the findings to do it. And whose heard theory, I don't think anybody's going to worry about that because there's only one abutting landowner.
Correct. So this is, this was a commissioner sale property that there is and one abutting landowner who is interested in acquiring the property.
Steve had the, you've got the legal on it, and I can get that. That was assessed at less than $6,000, I believe, and so there's no need for an appraisal. And you recall your resolution just found that it was appropriate to sell to the abutting owner, provided the abutting owner pays the minimum price of $100 plus, plus the advertising. So you indicated, I think she was willing to do that or was, you know. So if you do that by simple motion, that would be what.
So do we have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries. All right.
I'm in the process, aye being me without my assistant who's on vacation. I'm trying to get through a memo together for this executive session this afternoon, so as soon as we get through the real business, I'd like to duck out and finish that.
I'm confused. I've heard two different versions of that. So the executive session is of Wayne County's members of the W U R board or is it everybody?
And anybody else that, I kind of extended it to anybody on council.
Commissioners and council, anybody.
And I think we advertised it anticipating a possible majority of council being present on the open door notice.
Okay. So that's at 5 o'clock in the chambers in executive session. Okay. Anything else?
That's all right now.
All right. Steve, I've got a few things.
Did Nancy relate to you the results of the tax sale while she was in here?
She did not.
Just very briefly, the, there were 90 some properties that were up and I guess 40 of them did not sell, so we'll have to deal with those between now and the deed sale. It's going to be a list for our committee to go through.
Do you know how many of those are bare lots versus how many of them have?
Several, several of the 40 that didn't sell had high ticket tax accruals on them, which would suggest there has to be some form of improvement on them. You wouldn't be getting that on barely.
And so it may be that they're under an unsafe building order or anything like that.
There were a number, number on that list that were on unsafe building order as well. And so.
At least nine.
Yep.
Mark?
One or two of those ones that didn't sell. And we can take a picture of that property off of our computer so that, in trying to see on why some of these didn't sell, when I get done, I can give you all of that stuff of the 40 and if it helps.
Steve, what's the?
Yeah, what we normally do, and if you want to do that, we've got a group that gets together and does exactly that, determines whether or not there's an unsafe building order against it. If there's other issues that we're not aware of, why.
The next decision making point will come when we have to decide whether we want to pull these from the deed sale because we don't want to take title for whatever reasons.
You'll get that recognition from this group of.
We get the certificate of purchase.
Right.
Well, if you don't want that, don't, I mean, just take the time for me to do that, Jake. You don't want that.
I want it, but you don't have to take your time to do it because we'll, we'll get that from our group that gets together and Nancy Jackson is part of that group.
Okay.
We'll have, we'll actually go out and take photographs, real time photographs, because the ones on the, on Beacon are sometimes here. So we'll get real time photographs so you can see the condition of the property is now.
So something a little bit different this year than last year. The, both the, the city on Monday night approved the strategic investment plan for the help program. They have $300,000 to $400,000 in their portion. One of their projects is blight elimination. And the county also has money for blight elimination. And so some of those properties, if they're, if they're in a condition where they need to be removed, we may be able to use some of those dollars so we could take, take title, transfer it to the city. So we need to talk to them about which ones they're interested in.
What would be the timing of that? Because obviously our deed sale would be April or May next year.
Well, we can control the timing of it. I mean, it's, it's not, it's really not directed by the same statute that has the rest of the tax collection.
Okay.
Seeding's in it. It's not entitled 6.1, we're going under title 36, so just a matter of coordination with S R I.
So.
Getting our due diligence done so that we know what properties we want to include in the deed sale.
And so if we, if the plan is, let's say we're going to take possession of 10 of them and transfer those to the city so that they can tear them down. Does the timing of that have to coincide with the deed sale? Can that be, can that be moved forward or if they?
There are times, there's a time element in that, that our certificate of purchase is good, right? You know, but I think what it does is rekindle the redemption right for another 120 days if we were to sign the certificate of transfer. If we don't, if we just go ahead and put them in our deed sale, then the certificate of transfer gets essentially eliminated by the deed that goes, because one of the things that happens right before a deed sale is petition the court to direct that there be a deed issued to the commissioners, and so we take title. That's why anything going in the deed sale is, has been by definition titled into the, in the name of the commissioners on behalf of the county.
Well, I think, you know, we'll want to talk to folks about, about how that program might work and from the county's perspective, at least the preliminary discussions have been for the E D C and Sarah Mitchell, who had experience doing that with the city, that she would lead that process with the county dollars that are allocated.
I was going to say, we don't really have a process in place to take it to the blight elimination step. I mean, I just in the conduit to eliminate the taxes, I get title to the city, so.
I think the ones particularly outside of the city limits, we need to look at a process for.
I think that based on these 40 properties sooner than later is better to at least get that process going so that we can.
Absolutely. We want to, we want to make sure that whichever ones of these properties are candidates for that or at least evaluated and whether they should be taken over.
Ron, you know if any of those nine unsafe buildings are outside the city of Richmond or do you think they're all inside the city?
I think they're all inside the city. There are nine unsafe building orders out. That was the number I recall of, on the list.
I thought normally we tried to pull those if we knew.
We're doing the deed sale, not tax sale.
That's true.
But particularly outside the city limits, it wouldn't be unusual for there not to have been an unsafe building order and.
It's small towns, so.
The building would be unsafe and maybe has been vacant for a long time. So.
I guess I, we were a little surprised there were that many no bids yesterday. I was, but then again, there was, the tax accruals were in some instances quite high.
Yeah.
But even some that were quite low did render no bid.
I think at that point, it's the people, the three or four that are moving money didn't want to have the hassle for interest on $300 or whatever.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's take a minute, Steve, and let's go to Brandon.
They're in guests for us.
This has been going on for, for a while, but do you want to just explain briefly where we're at with this, Brandon?
Okay, yes. Appreciate you being with me real quick. That is a memorandum of understanding for our access routes for our South G Street Bridge project through the city property. They received some land, water and conservation funding for their parks improvements, so we've reached an agreement where they're going to allow us to access their property and then we will return it to existing conditions, you know, prior to, you know, prior to starting. So it's part of the runaway process to within Dodd is we have to either, either buy access or temporary or having an M O U. And this with all parties, D N R, the city of Richmond and Wayne County, this is the best route for this project, so.
We hope this will be a kind of longer term than just a temporary easement of because of duration of it, you'll notice essentially for as long as the county has responsibility for maintenance of the bridge or as long as the bridge is being used as a public bridge and not decommissioned. And the only question might become if the nature of future repairs required something a little different than what is provided under this, we might have to do some addenda to it. And this was not something that caused problems for the city. That was the primary concern we had is we didn't want to get into a situation where they were viewing the rights that we obtained as being in derogation of the rights that were part of their, what is it called, gorge activation project, I think.
So they, they received federal funding for the gorge.
And so we didn't want to get into an argument that we were taking two acres or so, so we'd have to replace it, convert it to two acres to maintain that. So this was reviewed by D N R, I think that was the only, and I do want to thank Kim Vessels and A J for kind of ushering it through the process quickly. We told them that the bats of Indiana would be eternally grateful for at least one season. I don't know how long we live.
Right. There's a, there's a time limit on this so that we avoid any danger to the nesting Indiana bats, right?
Yes, mainly the construction letting of the project that is the push to get this done quickly. I still appreciate all the entities, D N R.
And Ron, you've reviewed this and.
I think I prepared it.
Well, that's good.
I did the first two pages.
Ronald L. Cross.
The attachments, I, out of my pay grade, they were.
Okay. So we've, we've discussed this several times. What's your pleasure?
I move for approval of the M O U.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the city of Richmond. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Is there just one copy?
I can make additional copies after.
How many, how many signs?
Just one signature page.
Just one, okay.
Do appreciate everybody working on this.
I'll get back, I'll get on the, the other one, the 20th Century Bridge. Oh, we have that coming up in April or May. Is that it?
Yes.
We got a little time on that.
Yes, we got a little bit of time on that one. I do have in there our attachments describing the access as well as the city of Richmond exhibit map, so if you want to look through that, make sure that's all.
Anything else?
Mark's going to test the senior commissioners.
Steve?
Okay. Back to your project list. Courthouse exteriors, you probably noticed they removed all their, their fencing and their lifts. They're now working on things that are on the ground. Obviously the lifts, metal is pretty expensive, so they wanted to get rid of those and fish and all, so. It'll be a punch list scheduled, I'm sure, in the next, within the next month on that project. It does look like it'll open any time during the year.
It looks really nice, I think.
It does. Now, remember, there's still some window work to do. Yeah, there's some door work on the west side. Cleaning of the windows was not included in the price, so.
But in there caulking and painting is included.
Yep. And that's what you're going on doing.
So did that include or not include the doors on the north and south side?
And we are getting a quote for that.
Okay.
With part around those doors and then caulking, re-caulking.
And once the exterior windows are cleaned, that may give rise to a need for interior window cleaning.
Probably.
So that you might want to add that to your interior work.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, sorry. What else?
And then the bathrooms, recall that we did create a punch list and they're simply waiting on a couple of parts to come in to finish that. The, you keep, item number 13, the cert court judge's office security, that work starts tomorrow and they were actually here today to scope out the work area and I assume they'll start setting up scaffolding and things. Coincides with next week, they'll be able to work on all next week because the judge is out the entire week, so that project should go pretty fast.
Fast like a couple of weeks or?
Yes, because all the material's here.
Okay, good.
And I would anticipate a couple of weeks on that.
Good.
And then the First Bank Expo H B A C project, they did dig the footers for the foundations for the outside, setting up the H B A C units. Would anticipate that gets poured today, given that the fact that rain comes in the next couple of days, so I think they're going to try to pour that today. And then the November 16th day is the target date to start inside. Then number 18, 19 and 20, recall that council did approve number 18 not to exceed 25,000 and they approved, then the other two not to exceed 55,000. Those numbers there, as you see, are firm quotes on the annex ejector panels and the annex sum panel. Another quote or two on those because of the scope of that work. On the annex main service upgrade, the majority of that is labor and the fact that they've got to work on weekends, it's time and a half or maybe double time for some of the folks, but the vast majority of that quote is labor. I think that falls within the scope of our purchasing policy of service where the part is just simply incidental to the, to the work. And I would recommend that we accept that quote and go ahead with that work for $10,859.
Move for approval.
Motion in a second to approve a contract for the annex main service upgrade in the amount of $10,859. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
That'll take some coordination with I T because the entire power would be out of this building for a number of hours, so we'll want to pull down the servers. 911 center though, will continue to operate because it's on a different power.
It has its own feed.
It has its own feed. E M A and 911 has its own electrical feed, but it also has its backup battery or generator if in fact something goes wrong, but it'll just be this building that will be out.
Okay.
And then tonight, recall that Bobby has advertised for $2 million appropriation for the one-time expenditures. I just simply put this number there for you and council. Recall that the number in the lower right-hand corner, 1.945, that is, those are firm numbers with the exception of the estimates on the two roofs at the, at the fairgrounds. So that 1.945 is what would be remaining if they, if we paid everything out before the end of the year. In that one-time council budget, there still is about $151,000. So with the $2 million appropriation, that would give $2.1 million. And then down at the very bottom, I just simply calculated that amount of 1.945 plus a 10% contingency puts it about 2.1. So, so we would have enough money with the appropriation tonight and what's left in the one-time account to finish all these projects this year if all the money was called for.
And we probably won't all get done this year.
I don't think so, although we do have, we've got signed contracts and signed quotes for everything except the roofs, so that money could be encumbered if they so choose.
What is that 1.9 million, the sum total of, because that which is highlighted in yellow does not add up to 1.9?
It's actually, it's actually line five or nine, line nine to the right outside and then the other things below it. The line nine is a total of the 2022 projects and then the bottom total line is a total of line nine total and then all the other ones below that, so.
So it includes the expo hall HVAC?
Yes.
Okay, because I was missing a half a million.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on that?
So the jail window replacement is finally going to happen.
Yeah. The word from the contractor, in fact, they were here a couple of weeks ago just to take their final measurements because, you know, once they cut these.
Measure twice, cut once.
Yes. So they, at that time, they'd given us a, I think a three to five week time period. I just keep counting down the clock, so now we're down to two to four weeks this one there.
Any other questions on projects?
Progress.
All right.
So you've seen the parking lots that have been marked, not quite finished marking the parking lots. We've got some signings that'll come soon to, to indicate the parking areas in the loading zone and the emergency vehicle parking as well as the reconfigured handicap parking. So I put together this draft policy and this is a policy as opposed to an ordinance. So this, as you saw in the narrative, that this is enforceable by department, had some elected officials on their employees through the county handbook, employee handbook. There will be a companion ordinance to this, so it will actually be an ordinance for the enforcement of the handicap portion of it and no parking and the emergency vehicle parking and violations of the loading zone parking. Those will actually be in ordinance form so that they could be ticketed if necessary.
Do you know if the sheriff will enforce the loading zone as well as the emergency vehicle area?
Yeah. The conversation I've had with the sheriff, once these are properly marked and signed and ordinance in place, obviously he has discretion on how he enforces that, but he's indicated that he's on board with that.
So this ordinance that you're talking about, what would be the content? This actually would.
It'll actually be a.
Legal to park there or it's already illegal?
We don't, you got to have an ordinance backing it up.
So the state, state handicap parking policy wouldn't apply, so we have to have an ordinance, okay?
So we'll do that and then there'll be a penalty applied to it and then we'll have to amend the other one that allows this to be taken care of through the violations bureau. There's an existing ordinance for the violations bureau, but it indicates what offenses can be heard.
Okay, so there, it would be a fine if?
Yes.
Potentially, okay. So we need to set the amount of the fine to that level of detail?
Yeah.
And then the clerk's office would, would collect that?
Yes.
So you have.
City has in place an ordinance violation bureau that runs through the clerk too, doesn't it? You know, I don't, I don't know.
There's one through the city clerk, but.
I, I think at one time it did go through the city clerk, but I think they changed that, but I'm not sure. I don't know. So you've, you know, this is the first time you've seen this document. I, I think it's representative of what we have talked about up to this point. I've added some, some definitions that are specific to this policy, so there's an understanding of, you use a specific word, what that means. On page two, I've identified the different parking lots and there's a color associated with that because the hang tags, the parking tags are color coded as well so that you can tell at a glance if they're parking in the appropriate parking lot. We've spelled out the exception for the trustee, trustees' office parking. Remember that we have a contract with them through, I think it's 2027, as I recall, that they're entitled to so many spots in this lot because of the money that they gave to build this building. So, so they're, they automatically get, I think it's five or six spots, but we'll clarify that before we get too far into this. And then handicap, employee handicap parking, if they have a state issued handicap plate or permit, that's obviously something we'll, we'll accept, but they acknowledge that by registering that in the H R's department and then we will provide them with a spot because the handicap spots that we have now are the correct number of spots that are required for the overall number of spots in the parking lot. Before, we always had extra to accommodate employees if they were, had a handicap, but this way we're going to provide them specifically with a spot for a handicapped employee or a permission to park in a certain spot for a handicapped employee. Now, would those be marked handicap or are they just an assigned? They'll be able to park wherever close as they can get. I've considered doing that, marking that, and we may do that. The only, the only issue I see with that, and I'm sure you've thought of it, is if it's marked a handicapped and that could be taken up. Sure. And I, I've done some, you know, research of how mostly universities handle this and they actually designate employee handicap. With a sign, it specifically says employee. So I'm conscious of that and I will address that one way or the other.
And what I, what I don't want to do, we need to think this through, is if there's a week or a month where we don't have any employees.
Yeah.
Who have disabilities that need to park there, that we can unmark it.
Correct.
So that anybody can use it. So you think of like a sign that you would put up specifically for a person that has come to the H R office and said, I broke my leg, I need for a month to be able to have a space close to the door.
I think that's easily handled just as we do tax, temporary tax parking.
The signs will be a little more nicer looking, but it'll be just like that.
It could be a concrete in a bucket.
There's a company that makes a, make a, it's like a 70 pound base and it's actually got wheels on it.
Oh.
That you can tip it over and roll it away.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Temporary employee handicap.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's easily handled on a temporary basis, yeah.
And then on page four, we've accepted out some folks. Obviously the county attorney's not an employee, the judges and magistrates are not employees and there's some security issues of not giving them an assigned spot, allowing them to park wherever they feel is comfortable. The 911 employees working from 6 P to 6 A, it's not an issue for us through the day. Same thing with the second shift building grounds employees. Then again, the township trustees' employees are handled under another agreement. And then the violations of this policy are handled by the department heads and officials that they are authorized to enforce this policy through progressive disciplinary action as provided for in our. that they are authorized to enforce this policy through progressive disciplinary action as provided for in our county handbook.
What about highway employees who are just in and out temporarily?
Right, I, I did not, they're, they're not included as an employee, so they can come and go as they please, just as Brandon, when he pulled in, park and
So they'd be treated as a visitor?
Yeah.
So they don't need a tag?
No.
Now, we've had a lot of discussion about 911 employees who work 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. because about six months out of the year, it is, every bit is dark at 6:00 a.m. when they arrive, as it is.
So, so when we go assigning these tags, we know that they will be assigned to this lot here. So they'll have a
Well, if they come at 6:00 o'clock, they're going to get their choice of parking space.
So the, the daytime 911 folks will be assigned to the annex lot.
Okay, and the nighttime?
They
Park wherever they want. Nobody's here, so
They'll park on the street over there.
Yeah, I know, that's where they normally park, but they can park wherever they want.
Okay, I just wondered, okay.
So
And that, that's okay with Matthew?
Yeah, that was actually
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was accommodated because I, I just have a question on page three. Under parking tag, maybe this is a vehicular term I'm not familiar with, but on line two where it says either by hanging from the vehicle's review mirror, is that supposed to read rear view?
That's a new term, view.
I mean, it reviews what's behind you, but I think you want to say rear view.
I do, yeah. That's why spell check didn't pick it up.
No, it's a perfectly good word, and maybe it's a technical term, I don't know.
I appreciate that.
You know, I think this is excellent, and obviously a great deal of work has gone into this, and I don't know when you went to law school, but this certainly has some legalese to it, which I don't know if Ron's reviewed it or not, I mean
I sent it to him, and there's still time to review this because you're going to go over this with, during your elective
Next week, yeah.
So there's still time to
You know, one of the significant changes in this draft is that there are very few reserved spaces. And, and purposefully, I think, so that, because of the intent, as you look at the opening page two, it says the intent is to provide the public with as many parking spaces as possible. And so, for example, if you reserve a space for Joe Smith, and Joe Smith is on vacation for a week, the reserve sign is still there.
Right.
And so you've given up that space, and nobody's parking it.
Will the trustee's spaces be marked reserved in the same area where they normally make it?
Five.
That's, that's
Five or six, I, we'll, we'll figure out the number, but it's five or six, I can't remember. And there's actually seven over there.
And but give them, you know, what is in the contract, and if there are others, they'll be assigned to the public.
Yeah.
Will they be public or will they be assigned?
Well, they'll be, they'll have
We have to assign whatever they agreed to 40 years ago. And then, well, everybody else would be like any other employee here. If they're assigned, they'll be assigned to a parking lot, this lot.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, but not to a space.
Festival seating.
Yeah, right, right, so. So I think that will, that plus adding the six spaces, I think, is going to be very helpful in making spaces available to the public.
Give it a whirl.
Nancy, Nancy said when she was in here earlier that she didn't think there was any need, given what we're talking about, to, to put up the, you know, temporary parking while paying your taxes, but she kind of was played that by ear.
Maybe not many.
Because you are thinking, and where does it refer to the spots where employees cannot park?
It doesn't yet.
So one of the things we, he and I had talked about yesterday was that middle row of parking spaces to, to maybe reserve those for customers, customer parking.
They won't be noted as reserved, but the employees will be told, you can't park there.
That is public park.
Yeah, right, and it's saved exclusively for the public.
And so if, you know, if, if their supervisor sees a hang tag parked in one of those public customer spots.
The entire middle row?
Well, and that's what we need to talk about.
And, and that number is still
That's huge.
It is, and it's
I think there's 21 spaces across one, one side of that, so we're talking about one side of, not both sides of the middle.
So as we start to zero in head on, on employee assignments to what lot, that number will become more clear. But that's kind of where we're starting.
When you take out all the trustees' parking on the south row, all the reserved spots on the north row, I mean, that leaves
And we also talk in here about if you, if you are an employee and you assign a truck to do your work, that you don't park your car and your truck both in, in this parking lot. It's one or the other, and so my suggestion is the vehicles that are assigned to people should be parked in the west lot overnight, and then people could drive in and and get their, get their vehicle and do work for the day, and then drive back to get their car to drive home. And, and they only would park their, either their work vehicle or their personal vehicle in this lot, not both. So that should free up another half a dozen spaces that typically we have, we have all those vehicles parked out there.
And leave the work truck in the west lot overnight?
Overnight.
Exactly, yeah.
So they don't have to walk?
Exactly, no, no, they would drive.
Be very convenient all the way around.
That's
But as they come and go during the day
Yeah, they'll park out.
They can have their work trucks, so they're
Exactly, yeah. So we'll see what kind of feedback we get next week. We probably ought to send this out
I will.
ahead of time so that they can
I think that we should have that section of the employee handbook policy for enforcement of the disciplinary, sent to them also.
And that's a good idea.
Obviously, we need ordinances for the sheriff's enforceable parking sections, so those ordinances need to be drafted before this takes effect. And I also hope that we can have a more user-friendly condensed version so that an employee doesn't have to digest the entire four-page document to understand, you know. So it's just like, he will be issued a tag, and so it, it's boiled down to something
All the color and don't park in reserved spaces.
You know, just a real, you know, something that
Yeah, I think the department heads.
Yeah, because if every employee is given this four-page legalese
No, you're right, there should be a, just a brief, and, and it can be handed out when, when they get their, their parking tag.
Could it be on the backside of the tag, employees who face the ground rules are?
Not, they're, they're plastered.
Yeah, they're, they've been printed.
Could maybe be a label on the backside, but we can look at it.
Yeah.
It, it'd be easier to hand them a
This is the pass we always gave to pass fields.
I know.
The, the Reader's Digest, a bridge version of complex.
We can, we can still give it to her. She can help out.
10%.
She can help out.
So if, obviously, you just saw this for the first time yesterday. You've got, you've got time to think about it.
I, I think we're going in the right direction.
I think it looks good.
Nice job, nice job.
I don't see any issues there, so
You know, part of the, the issue will be then on the actual assigning people to a lot. So we'll see how that goes. And thank you for taking on volunteering for that assignment, we appreciate that tremendously.
The kicker, that the courthouse is going to be the
Yeah, that's So, you know, we need to talk to people, we need to be open to looking at, having a discussion about why I think I need to be assigned to a different lot.
Can't we accept recommendations from elected officials and department heads?
I think
Ultimately, we will have to come up with the numbers, you know, and then we, I think, can accept the names from the elected officials and department heads as to who gets assigned to which lot from the director. I mean, they know who has
And that'll be the purpose of, of having this conversation next week when we meet with them, so get their, their direct feedback.
All I have, yeah.
All right. We have claims?
Yes. Lots of claims today. We have regular claims dated October 18th. We have federal payroll taxes and retirement claims dated October 20th. The Dunn Flex and Garnishment dated October 20th. Regular payroll dated October 20th. Centerpoint gas claims dated October 13th. And also the MasterCard claims dated October 17th. Move for approval of all these claims.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims, so is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign, motion carries.
I also move for approval of Commissioner Minnitz dated October 11th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last week's meeting, any further discussion? Hearing all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign, motion carries. I've got one other thing that Corey George has asked to meet with us next week, and we'll give this document to Ron to review, but there is a, a state program that is actually called the Trex Program. It's a tax refund, exchange, and compliance system. I remember when I was at Ivy Tech, Ivy Tech was able to use this where if somebody didn't, didn't pay their, their tuition, they owed the college money, and they were, they were able to receive a state tax refund, income tax refund, that that money could be diverted to ensure repayment to the college. This is the, the same program. This would be for, for probation and community corrections, so as people are assessed fees to participate in those programs, if they don't pay, but they have a state income tax refund coming to them, this would divert some of those funds to repay the debt they had incurred for participating in those programs. So Corey will be with us next week with, discuss that, commissioners would need to, to sign off on that. There is a statutory enabling act Correct. And it's actually, somehow it's administered by AIC. And I'm not sure exactly, maybe just in, in signing people up or some fashion, but the Association of Indiana Counties is involved in, in expediting it somehow. So I'll, I'll also email that to you guys, and you'll have a chance to look at it before he comes in. Ron, I think I already sent it to you, so take a look at that. As I said, the, the city of Richmond approved the strategic investment plan on Monday unanimously, so that was positive, so all eight of the communities have have accepted the help strategic investment plan, so we'll be working on implementation and how do we, how do we go about each step along the way. I'm, I'm going to ask the council tonight to transfer some money, some of the ARPA money, because East Germantown is ready to proceed with two of their projects, so make that money accessible to them, they want to complete it by the end of the year. Ron will, will be working on the grant of understanding for our first project, which is the animal welfare review. So we're moving forward as quickly as we can with all of those projects, and we'll hope to stay on track. Remember, the ARPA dollars have to be committed by the end of next year, and then have to be expended by the end of 2026. So I don't have anything else. Bobby, did you have anything else we need to sign?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I have something I want to work out.
Sorry, go ahead.
As much as I hate to think about Christmas stuff, but I had a request from Main Street Richmond to use the West Parking Lot December 1st at 5:30 to stage for their Christmas parade. I think that'd be a problem, but
The West Parking Lots?
Yeah, yeah, like they did last year.
Between, between 2nd and 3rd Street.
December 1st at 5:30.
Move for approval.
Second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same sign, motion carries.
And we also have a request to consider closing the courthouse and annex on Eclipse Day, April 8th at noon. Not that it would be a holiday, but just closing county offices to the public so that department heads and elected officials could scale back the number of people in their offices because it's anticipated that there will be a reduced number of citizens coming to county offices the afternoon of the eclipse. And of course, that would affect the court schedules as well. So the judges might want to continue with their court scheduling. But the, thinking by the requesting parties that employees could very well be stuck in huge traffic jams if they have to continue working till 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock. But if they could be, certain employees could be taking four hours off of their own time, not holiday time, and leave at 12:01. 2:00 is too late because there will be a traffic jam, they would be caught in a traffic jam before they could get home.
I, yeah.
I think we maybe ought to reconsider that, there's time to consider it.
There is, and I, I actually suggested that to some people at the, at the AIC convention. I was sitting with some, some of our elected officials, and we talked about that. I'd like to bring it to our elected official department.
That's what I said next week.
Maybe we could have a discussion before that.
I don't, I don't see where it would be a harm, I, I didn't want to add another holiday to our already generous holiday schedule. But I, I think if, if they're all supportive of that, that we can certainly look at that as an optional day, so the buildings could be closed to the public for that one day, and then the department heads, elected officials can decide how many of their, of their staff they could release. And if we're close to the public, it should be, you know, a sizable number, so let's discuss that, put it on the agenda for next Wednesday with the elected officials, and we can even send something out to them as this is the agenda, and that's one of the items that we'll discuss next week.
I don't think it's necessary to close our offices for the whole day.
Let's discuss it.
I don't, that's why I'm suggesting that we discuss it before we throw it open to that larger group. I, I think we could have some thoughts regarding it prior to the larger group.
So you think a half a day?
That's, that's my feeling because, you know, especially the courthouse, you know, closing the courthouse for a full day can disrupt, you know, the flow, being a Monday especially.
They may not want to close it at all.
Right.
That's, you know, if the, if the judges don't want to close it, we're not
I think if the judges want to hold court, the judges should have every right to hold court, yeah.
Exactly, which means the building will be open. So anyway, let's, let's have that discussion, I get the point that you think a half day, so 12:00?
Right.
And we can, we can consider that, we've got plenty of time. So I, I think we should try to make a decision before the end of the year, certainly, but I think we can do that.
Yeah, pain, pain. Yeah, pay, pay, holiday pay, just, we, we have to have so many county employees on duty that day.
Absolutely.
It would just be a terribly expensive holiday.
Agreed. Okay, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, sir?
Yes, sir, I just, my name is Bill Wibbles, I'm representative of CivilCon in Terriffusville, Indiana. We just recently did a job for you all, the county, down on Smoky Road in Carlos, we replaced a concrete bridge. I just want to thank you all for working with us, it's in the western part of the county, we're by Greens Fork. Brandon and Mike were excellent to work with.
Aren't they?
And we-
Glad you agree.
Eight good people, so. Another thing is, we've been working in the county for years, we look forward to working with you all for many more years, I just want to thank you all, it was smooth.
Sure.
Easy as can be, thank you very much.
And I'm sorry, what was you gonna do?
It's Bill Wibbles, W-I-B-B-E-L-S, with CivilCon, I've got my card, I appreciate, sir, it does look good, so, I appreciate it. And that will be long, and they'll be here long after we're all memories, so.
Oh, thank you, I'm the commissioner from Greens Fork, so I want to thank you very much.
Don't go out there and take a look at it, it looks pretty-
Oh, I have, a lot of good neighbors, friends, and relatives in that area, so thank you.
And minimal, I think minimal shutdown, too, so.
Yes, absolutely.
They're working on one of our state roads where I live, and that thing's been closed for, seems like three months for the same bridge, and I'm like, we did it in days, so I appreciate, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Bill, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? If not, I make motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, and second, we're adjourned.